Good morning, we are going to call the meeting to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a prayer. Heavenly Father, read beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the October 7th minutes.
Second motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes. Next up, we have public comment regarding pending resolutions. Is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Sitting down, we'll move on to resolutions. First off, Highway Engineer, we have Dan Becker here today. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got five resolutions for your consideration. The first is approving the annual assessments in lots seven and eight in the Hoxford subdivision. The second is approving the final plat in the Hoxford subdivision for those same two lots. The third is approving the annual assessments on lots 76 and 77 in the Highlands of Sharon subdivision, Phase One. And the fourth is approving the final plat for that same two lots in Phase One. And the last is the necessity to close Ridgewood Road for call for replacement.
I'll make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Good, thank you.
Except Jeremy Cinco from Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is accepting and awarding the bid for the Hinckley wastewater treatment plant electrical infrastructure upgrade project. That came in at about $2 million under engineers' estimates, so pretty happy with that. The second is authorizing change order number one for the blower building upgrade project at Plum Creek Maintenance Facility. And the third is authorizing the Sanitary Engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services for the Chippewa and Lake Road water main replacement project.
Make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Next up is Denise Testa from Planning Services.
Good morning.
Morning, Denise.
I sent two resolutions. The first is authorizing the Medina County Board of Commissioners' signatures for the foot road professional, I'm sorry, for the foot professional development condominium, replat number two. And then also authorizing the small purchases procurement method for the PY24 CDBG battered women's shelter, also known as Hope &amp; Healing Survivor Resource Center van purchase.
Make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion, second, is there discussion? Roll call.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, we have Holly Murin from HR.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Job and Family Services and one at Senior and Adult Services. Three rate increases, one in Sanitary, two in Transit. One promotion at Job and Family Services. One lateral, two lateral class changes at Job and Family Services. One leave of absence in Sanitary. And two resignations, one at Senior and Adult Services and one in Transit. Second resolution is amending the Table of Organization for Job and Family Services.
Make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Brett Thomas for Finance. Morning, Brett.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I have five resolutions for you guys today. We're going to start off with a cash transfer for the County Home Levy Fund. This is our third quarter transfer in the amount of $295,214.54. Our second resolution is the transfer for the Vehicle Maintenance Fund for Quarter Three. That is in the amount of $58,093.55. Our third resolution is acceptance of a procurement card application for the Probate and Juvenile Court. This is their second card. When traveling, it's rather difficult to have only one card for the department because now a lot of places are requiring the physical card when you travel to present for hotel stays. So, our fourth resolution is expenses for county officials for our travel for the week. We have nothing out of state. And our fifth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $6,181,647.60. As usual, that is, including our quarterly sales tax amount that we covered last week and the amount of $5 million that transferred to all of the different school districts.
I'll make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes. Brett, and are you able to stick around for our discussion? Because we're going to have property tax discussions again. Thanks. Matt Springer, County Executive, County Administrator, I'm sorry. I'm giving you a promotion.
It's okay. Just two resolutions. The first one is a change order number one for the Human Service Center restroom project. We had to rework some of the plumbing. And the second resolution is accepting and awarding professional design services for the Medina County Dog Shelter with FMD subject to contract negotiations.
Make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second emotion.
Motion, second. The scoring looks like FMD was a good favorable match.
They were the unanimous.
Great.
High.
I'm excited about that project.
Exciting.
Super, it is. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Swedick, Hambley, Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're good, thank you. Next up, we have Department Updates, and I think we've got Skip Sypos here from Metro Housing.
Good morning, Skip. Good morning, everyone.
You already circulated the written materials, so thank you for that.
Yeah, happy to do it. With me, as always, when we're making presentations, is Jesse Kane, who is the Program Director for Emergency Housing Programs at the Authority. Programs, plural, not just the shelter. She'll be making future presentations to you about this, as this will be my last one to you guys.
Bittersweet.
Wow.
Oh.
No. For us.
Thank you, that's kind. At your place, you have a copy of the most recent edition of the Impact Report that we publish monthly. That's for supporters and just to educate folks about what's going on at Next Step Up, the county's emergency housing shelter. Some quick stats for the folks who are reviewing this. Keeping with the theme, a place to land, a place to launch. We've had 141 guests enter shelter since February 28th. Of those, 15 have been children, seven veterans, and we have welcomed six canines and two felines. 19 households, a household can be one or more, have successfully transitioned and executed lease agreements. That's a big deal. That's a very great success story. In addition, 35 other households have self-resolved, meaning they've relocated with family but found more appropriate housing outside of a traditional lease agreement. Three of the shelter veterans have utilized VASH vouchers. This is a federal rental assistance program for vouchers that enters to the Authority and that we administer. And guests have connections to or arriving from all three of the county's cities, as well as many of the unincorporated areas. So, the folks that are presenting at shelter are from all over the county. Several outside entities like churches and businesses have been providing support and services at the shelter, including meals, trainings, just some good fellowship. And as a reminder, Next Step Up has 27 beds and two cribs. What happens? We do a detailed intake process. I want to make sure that everybody understands that shelter is the last place that we want. We work on diversion tactics to make sure folks don't necessarily have to come into shelter. Housing Authority's case managers work on those diversion techniques with referrals and other resources. Case management, everyone who enters shelter, and many of the programs Jesse administers, receive comprehensive case management services. They're aimed at the crisis or crises that people have when they're entering shelter. Could be simply the loss of employment and they need to get back on their feet economically. It could be folks dealing with substance use challenges, mental health disorders, things like that. Who's been helping us? Churches. Lots of churches have made financial contributions to Next Step Up's 501(c)(3) nonprofit piece of this puzzle. We've had celebrations like Mother's Day, Fourth of July, and many folks and entities are making donations that guests avail themselves of. Service providers, we bring in all sorts of service providers here in the county, and as you guys know, we have great service providers in Medina County. That includes folks from Hope Recovery, Alternative Paths, Veteran Services, JFS, Free Clinic of Medina County, Health Department, many, many others. The funding outlook. So, the state of Ohio, in its infinite wisdom, has decided that they will not fund new shelters for calendar year '26. Obviously, we're not new. We've been around now since the, since February. But because we're not in their renewal funding rotation, we are not eligible for their funding of new shelters next year. So, we are looking at carryover funds. We have a significant amount of funds that we'll be able to carry over from this year. And the Ohio Department of Development has helped us with some other ways to generate some resources. In addition to that, Job and Family Services has an agreement with the Authority where we have TANF-eligible households in shelter. We're able to bill a daily rate to that, and we've been doing that and not having to use that. That money can also be carried forward. And my conversations with the JFS Director indicate that they will likely be coming to you to renew that same agreement in the not-too-distant future. The cities, including the city of Medina, first, has authorized a $50,000 allocation for operations next year. Their funding allocation is contingent on the other cities and the county participating in operating funding for next calendar year. Later tonight, I'll be at the Brunswick City Council meeting, basically with the same presentation, so hopefully I've got it down pat. The budget, this year's budget, $600,000 to operate the shelter, which is open 24 hours a day every day of the calendar year. Next year's budget should be about the same. We are looking at utilizing volunteers more if we have to cut back on staffing. Jesse will be launching a volunteer academy before the end of the year. We have lots of people who want to volunteer, but we want to make sure that they're properly trained and brought on board. In addition, Next Step Up, the nonprofit, is working to generate philanthropic and other support. Mark your calendars for bingo next year. It's Bingo fundraiser, the 28th, no, 27th of February next year. Mark your calendars, everybody. I'm told people love to play bingo.
I do.
Okay, fantastic. Colleen, we'll see you there. I'm told it's crazy popular and it's going to do that. So, I'll conclude by telling you that Next Step Up is doing what it was designed to do. It's bringing folks in, it's providing them services, it's giving them that opportunity to make a transition in their life where they don't need shelter anymore. Until the state, though, begins funding new shelters, and we're considered new in their eyes, that we're eligible for renewal funding, the community has to continue to support this, and I'm happy to entertain questions if you have any.
That's a good report.
Oh, great, thanks for the, thanks for the update.
We appreciate, yeah, the leadership. Because I know that last year, it was a little bit, there were some strings that had to be pulled to get the funding, because it was a new shelter last year and the same policy applied, so.
It's great to have good connections with our legislative delegation to Columbus.
The best hope, at least in terms of state funding, in the 2027, when the state does a budget, that they'll hopefully bump up some of the support for that.
I should have mentioned, I'm sorry, we are planning the dedication ceremony for the shelter. It won't be at the shelter, because that's somebody's home. That's on the 20th of November. It'll be at the fire station right near there, and of course, you'll all be invited. We'll have great pictures and more success stories to share.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Good job. And I think that's our only Department Update, so that moves us into public comment. So, there's folks in the public here. We will start over here, and as always, I know you've been here before, but make sure you just share your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes to comment.
My name is Teresa Snyder. My address is 10145 Shaw Road. It's in Chatham Township. P.O. Box 243, it's Spencer, Ohio. And the reason I'm here today, oh, I'm making a statement, I'm nonpartisan. Okay? So, the reason why I'm here today, something that caught my attention is in Cuyahoga County years ago, remember by the West Side Market, that neighborhood was, then all of a sudden it developed, and property taxes went, and this woman said, "I can't afford these property taxes. They all lived in old homes. I can't afford it." She was retired, she was an elderly lady. She's being priced out of her home. That's the first thing. Then, I was listening to an Ohio Channel, the Ohio Channel, and they were talking about, they had both groups that said they needed to do something about property taxes. They were getting too high for people. Okay. Then, it was going to go to the state for some, making something about property tax. And I had an idea. And my proposal was to make everybody who's on a fixed income and retire, their property taxes just frozen. Frozen wherever they're at, because when they retire, no matter what their income, they know they can afford those property taxes. And I talked this over with Mike Kovak, so he was Medina County Attorney, now he works for the Clerk of Courts. And he says, "That sounds like a really good idea." And so, I, you know, I ran it by him, the experts first. And I says, "Well, I don't know how to get a hold of anybody." He says, "Well, call your representative." It was with Sharon Ray. And I called her, this is before they voted on it, and left a message with her office. Of course, they voted on it, and there was a big backlash, even from you guys. It was just wrong. Just wrong. Now, people that are on fixed incomes, they were the base that got everybody here. And, but they're not, I go to the senior center, and, you know, they talk about, "Well, if the school is a renewal, I'll vote for it, but if it's an increase, I won't." They can't afford it. But if they know their property tax isn't going to go up, they're going to vote. It's going to increase the voting for your levies, the school levies. And I also ran this by a superintendent of one of the schools, and thought it would work, too. And I believe it could work, because they were talking about decreasing everybody's taxes. Yes, taxes are so high, but when you retire, you know you're going to be on that income. So, I think it would increase the voting for the levies and getting them passed, keep people in their homes, their share of sales, and that's probably for people just being priced out of their homes because of property taxes. Just freeze them. It's, oh, yeah, I'd love to see this go nationwide. You know? But, so anyways, I brought this, and what brought me here, because of your article in here, no, this isn't going to work. So, anyways, that was what brought me here. And the other thing I want to say, I worked in healthcare since 1965, when there was no insurance or anything, and how it's evolved to where it is now. And the shutdown in Washington is related to healthcare. Medicaid, Medicare does not pay for any long-term insurance. None of it. That's all Medicaid. That's where the money goes, not to illegals or anything else. That's where the money goes. Now, what's going to happen to these institutions if they don't get paid? And that's our seniors, and these are people that are on severe, they just don't take anybody. It's on the long-term care. Anybody with severe strokes, and they don't have families, traumas, they could be young people with traumas. So, that's my thing on that. So, and I am going to the trustees' meeting in Chatham tonight, so I'm going to bring this up to them. And I'll call Sharon Ray again, and I don't know if she's going to do anything about it or not. I don't have any control over that. But your input, I think, would have a big impact, too.
Thank you. And we will be discussing a little bit more about property tax reforms. If you're planning to stick around, that'll come up in our discussion session, so that might be of interest, too. But thank you for sharing.
Is this any interest to you guys?
It's, well, we've got to deal with the powers that we've been given by the state so far, and those are the plans that we're trying to work with.
Local, local.
Well, I would, I would point out, number one, the CCO actually, and then there's, as part of the updates and so forth, there is legislation work its way through that would exactly do what you're talking about, freeze it for those that are low-income seniors.
Just on, no matter what their income is.
Well.
Well, no, if I retired on a bigger.
No, no, I understand, I'm just telling you what the legislation says. Okay. So, basically, it's more of the low income, it's means-tested, what that level is and how that's determined. Obviously, the state puts the parameters in, but there is legislation to do exactly what you're saying with the approach to freezing the values until such time as it transfers, right, and freeze it. But that's, CCO is supportive of some of those initiatives. There's legislation work through, but I would point out, Chatham, actually, Melanie Miller is your state representative. Sharon Ray doesn't cover Chatham Township.
Oh, where I'm at, it's Sharon Ray.
Oh, okay.
Because Chatham is split.
I didn't think Chatham was, but that's all right. I didn't think so, but that's okay. I just, it's probably good to reach out to Melanie Miller as well. Since, basically, our state, our county has two state representatives.
Okay.
It looks like we have somebody else here to speak. They can state your name and address in your five minutes.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nick Bungern. I actually do not reside in Medina County, but I'm here on behalf of a nonprofit called the Ohio Land and Liberty Coalition. Our goal is to build conservative support for renewable energy in Ohio, but that's not the reason why I'm here today. Today, I'm here to learn from y'all. This is part of a greater initiative that we have called the 88 County Tour of Ohio. Y'all are number 63 in terms of Boards of County Commissioners that we've met with this year. I've got a very quick standardized list of questions that we ask all Commissioners in regards to renewable energy. If this is not the proper format, I'm happy to email them.
That'd probably be better, I would think.
Sure. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And only because we're offended that we're 63rd on the list, you know, top 10.
Well, I'll tell you, we started out in southeast Ohio, because nobody's really been out there in terms of renewable energy. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Jeremy, do you have anything? No.
Okay. The Commissioner's cards are out at the front desk. Your email address.
No other public comments? Then we'll move on to discussion session, and as mentioned, well, Denise, do you have anything for discussion?
No, I do not.
Okay. I want to make sure we have the property tax discussion, but I know our friends from the Wadsworth School Board, or from the Wadsworth City Schools are here. Would you guys like to kick us off with your remarks, and then we'll begin our discussion of the property tax? So, yeah, Superintendent Hill, please. So, well, we know who you are, but just give your name for those who don't.
Andy Hill, Superintendent of Wadsworth City Schools, 625 Broad Street, Wadsworth. Thank you for allowing comments here this morning. Our Board of Education had discussion at their meeting last night about what's being proposed with the piggyback on the homestead exemption. And they, after their discussion, passed a resolution and then some also policy position statements that they asked Doug Beaman, our Treasurer, and myself to deliver to you and kind of share the thoughts and concerns. So, Doug has the documents that we'll give to each of you, but just to kind of summarize where they're at, I think the first thing to say in listening to what was said a few minutes ago here as well, I don't think it's lost on anybody that this property tax issue is a huge issue that needs to be addressed in some way, shape, or form. Our Board of Education is well aware that there's numerous things happening at the state level right now, whether that be governor vetoes of items in the budget bill, that one is which has been overridden, two more that they're having discussions about. A plethora of bills that have been introduced, some of which have retroactive provisions with funding if they do make their way through both chambers and are signed into law that would take place immediately. A ballot initiative, a referendum, whatever the proper terminology is, that may find its way to the ballot in November of '26. And a real concern about listening to people being concerned about being priced out of their homes, other things. I've heard that here today, heard it at the Medina Hospital Advisory Committee. I've had people in Wadsworth share the same. So, everybody acknowledges the problem is real. The challenge for Wadsworth City School District in regards to the discussion that's happening right now is we're locked into the way that the state funds schools. Over time, I think 20 years ago is the number, the local share of funding was about 47%. And now, it's up to sit close to, yeah, close to 70%. It's 68% of things. So, the state has done a lot of policy shifting that has resulted in where we're at today with locals having to pick up more of a share. Wadsworth City is not at the 20 mil floor, which means that when these property taxes, our property rates go up, we're not seeing the substantial growth in tax revenue that many of the other districts in our county are, or in the state for that matter, because we were not at that level. We see the increase on the inside millage, as you know, from those projections that you shared as you were considering things. And so, we're concerned that the potential piggyback, while one of the options given to you through the state budget bill, and we understand why it's being considered, will have a significant financial impact on our school district's ability to continue to operate at the service levels that we do for students. Doug presented a revised financial forecast last night to the Board as required by law this month, and we're showing after next year that we're, what, $6.00, almost $7 million in deficit. And then the last year of that, it compounds even further. And so, we're in a position where our Board of Education is going to have to be making decisions about what do they do within the means available to them to be able to continue to fund the schools and offer the services that our community has come to expect from the schools. We've been going through a period of declining enrollment. We've made employment reductions, attrition, through attrition, other things to adjust. And so, we're concerned that the homestead exemption, taking away over $550,000, it appears each year, compounded with other things that may happen that potentially could impact Wadsworth City Schools or other schools in the county at the state level. And while we don't know what's going to happen there, it sure seems like something is going to happen there. And so, acting on something locally before we know what the state is doing could have a double impact on many, on many districts. And we recognize the timing issue that you're in with October 31st as part of that budget bill for the upcoming year to make changes. We have other issues that we're facing. The TIF that was previously presented to you is 30 years at 100% is now apparently going to be reintroduced at 75% for 10 years, which removes our Board of Education's ability to have a say in that discussion as well. So, you know, we're concerned for many reasons. We're concerned for residents, but we're also concerned about our charge to be able to provide a solid foundation education to students at the level that our community is expecting. And so, as a result of all of that discussion, you know, the Board passed a resolution last night that's in opposition of that piggyback right now, as we wait to see what actually does happen at the state level, and we work, we work through other, other things. But for those reasons, that's, that's where our Board finds themselves right now. And Doug, is there anything else that I left out that you'd like to add?
So, the only thing I want to clarify from that is our discussions so far on the homestead piggyback have been a one-year, I mean, it's a next-year plan. Because to your point, there, we haven't heard the end of this from Columbus. There are going to be other changes, most certainly. I don't, I would, I would like to think that they're not going to be retroactive. I know some of that's been discussed. But I also believe what local governments do next is going to inform what Columbus does next as well. And so, I think our, you know, our responsibility in that was to kind of look at the, at the lay of the land as we know it today and make the best decisions we could. And it just struck me as impractical based on the time restrictions and also the law doesn't give, the new law doesn't give that many, nobody else other than us can approve the homestead. can, can approve the homestead piggyback. If we do that, then it might relieve the burden on other subdivisions to, to take other steps. If we don't do that, and then other subdivisions don't take other steps, then we've done nothing. And that, to your point, I think you, I think the premise we agree on, which is something has to be done. So I guess my question would be, were there any discussions from your board about, about measures that, that would be acceptable and still provide some reform and, and relief for, for property owners in the Wadsworth City School District?
I think our board's having ongoing conversations about all of that. You know, we're continuing to look internal at where our costs are, how we, what we can continue to do to reduce and control. But it, overall, no. I mean, the, the avenue that's available to us to fund schools is the ability for them to make a decision to ask for the community's support through a levy. And I, I think one of their concerns here is that every dollar that gets reduced then in a different way that we're not receiving leads to potentially a higher ask that they have to go back and ask the community for, that impacts everybody that's paying taxes, including those that something like what you're considering is, is designed to help and assist.
Right.
So to Aaron's point, though, they did understand this is just for next year. It's not permanent.
Believe. I, I don't know that that came up.
Yeah, because that's an important point, that it is just for next year.
This is meant to be temporary, one time. Hopefully, the, the hope and sincere hope is that by the time we get to 2027 tax bills, that the state policies and the changes will impact those households.
I, I would say that the information that you shared with us was shared with them. And while the one-year provision was not actively discussed, they, everybody had the same knowledge from what, what was shared. And I believe that was spelled out, if I'm not mistaken, in the letter.
Yeah. And the one number we didn't have and didn't provide, and actually, we just received, that just shared with, that today is the number of households that actually this impacts. And what I gather, when I start adding the, well, I guess the township and the Wadsworth City, just to make up, compose your, it looks like it's well over 1,500 senior households, as well as disabled and veterans, that would be, receive this temporary one-time relief. So that's, obviously, you know, the, for us, that's, that's a delicate balance. I know that there's an impact, and as well as a reduction in what you were anticipating in revenues. But we're likewise looking at where, where the need is and, and the impact on that. But I, I did want to get clarity on, on the one you mentioned about the, the TIF project that had come before this board, and that was over a 10-year, and therefore required the commissioners to, obviously, like, well, I think we didn't treat it too, too well, or didn't think too much of it. They've reduced it to less than 10 years, so it doesn't present to us. At that point in time, when they were coming before us, they were talking about a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes to the school districts. It was, is that off the table now? So there's actually no offset for the residential, we'll just say, as they, as residential units are built and they have children, they'll still have that 75%?
So we were, we were served with the, the notice that they're required to give of what they propose that they're going to potentially take to the council. And there, it did not indicate any type of payment being made to the schools to make up for what's lost. We haven't engaged in a lot of conversation with the city on that since we were served the notice.
Okay.
But we, we, they did serve that notice to us. And the only reason I bring that up is it's just another, it's not, you know, look, I, I think that, like I've mentioned before, the board understands and appreciates, without having been in your shoes, the position that you're in with tough choices that has to be made. But they recognize the need, the need that's there. They also recognize that the commissioners have always been good friends of school, of the schools, and have made decisions over time that have put not only Wadsworth, but other schools in this county, all of the schools in this county, in a better position than they were because of choices made here and support that's been given. So I don't want this to come across in any way as our board is being confrontational with what you're considering. We just want to make sure that you understand the impact, at least hear us directly say it, and not assume that you understand the impact of what we're looking at.
I think that's very important. And thank you for sharing that financial information. That's exactly what we need to, to look at this. Normally, we're not in a position to make those decisions, but this bill has essentially almost given us the responsibility to at least communicate with you and see what the impact would be.
Sure. Well, and I know, I, I, I know I can speak for everybody here. I don't, but I could speak for everybody here when I say none of us are eager to impose cuts on any other subdivisions, but particularly not schools. The, the way this shakes out, the schools, by virtue of being the biggest tax collector, are going to be the biggest, you know, the biggest recipient of, of the hit. But I also think that this is a moment that requires action to deliver tax savings to our most financially vulnerable populations. And, and the way to do that, based on the, the menu of options we were given, is the homestead expansion. It's just the most impactful way to, to make that happen. I know, I did look a little bit over your board meeting materials from last night, and I didn't see a copy of the resolution, so I appreciate you bringing that for us to take a look at. I did see, though, kind of the summary of information you had there, and it looked like you didn't have the, you're still waiting the, the information from the auditor on the new inside millage adjustments. And the numbers that we looked at, at last week's meeting showed an increase of a little over $1 million on the inside millage fund. So if the homestead expansion, I think we, I think your numbers and our numbers were the same on what that, the, the lost revenue would be. It's about $555,000. It's offset by new, new collections or, well, inside millage, an increase based on the tax appraisal increase of a little in excess of $1 million. So, you know, that's, that's another compelling component of this. When I look at those numbers, is I see, it's not, it's not ideal, but there are other entities, the Career Center, Parks District-
DD.
DD Board that don't, that don't collect inside millage.
They're going to go negative.
They're going to, they're going to take that hit. And, and in my conversations with both the DD Board and the Parks District last week, I, I think we're going to be seeing at least some action. I can't predict what their boards are going to do, but action even in support, because they recognize the need and, and those things, too. So, I mean, we want, we do want to hear from all the perspectives on this. And I know the schools are in a unique position on this, particularly with some of the other things percolating in Columbus. But, you know, I, I think, I think it's, it's time we all realize this is a unique moment in history. These discussions about property tax reform aren't going away. And I am at least somewhat optimistic that the more we do now and the, the harder bites we take today will maybe stave off some more existential discussions in the future.
And to Steve's point, the significant number of households that it affects across the county, we're also hoping to fend off delinquencies, which delinquent tax collection directly then affects, affects the school system and the taxes that the auditors are able to distribute to all the school systems. So we're also trying to be preemptive in understanding that for some households in fixed incomes, tax delinquencies could become an absolute reality.
Right. And the conversation I had with DD Board and Parks and some of the others last week, you know, if we could pick and choose, like fire districts also are ones that don't get inside millage, if we could pick and choose, or, or adjust, or make, you know, adjustments, some of these numbers would change. But the only way to get $5.5 million of tax relief into the hands of those financially vulnerable citizens of Medina County is to, is to click yes on this box. You know, it's, it's not a, we'll do half of it, or we'll do two-thirds of it. It's, it's an all-or-nothing proposition, which is, you know, there, there are things that we probably would tweak a little bit if we had the luxury of doing that. So-
Can I ask a question? Because out of not knowing, I know how schools operate. The other entities, do they have a floor as well? So is there, is there an increased amount that they bring in in revenue with property taxes?
Yeah. That's an, they don't have any kind of equivalent to the 20-mill floor. Yeah. The townships-
John.
Sorry. John Hunter, the auditor's office. The diff, the difference is, so the vocational school has a floor. It happens to be a 2-mill floor instead of a 20-mill floor. So, but the other entities, no.
And the reason I ask that, I think that's where our board had the discussions, too, that, at least in the school realm, most of them have this other revenue that's going to be coming in because of the increase in the property values that's not based strictly on the inside millage. And so that, that's why I'm asking for clarity, so that I can make sure accurately relay back what's being shared.
Yep. And, and then the other thing, and I know it was part of our discussion last week, and it was in our, in our discussions, but we're, we're also, I think, in an effort to be good stewards, having our own discussions, which aren't under the same timeline, but to roll back the county's inside millage, which I'm not saying that other entities should do that. I know, I've heard from a couple folks in townships that they are making, they're, they're going to have some discussions. Lafayette, I think, among other places, is having some discussions about what they might be able to do in terms of rolling that back. But our target, you know, is, is to do a significant rollback of our inside millage figure, because we do, we, we benefit from that. And I, I thought it'd be inappropriate, and I think we all think it's inappropriate, if we sit here and say, here's what we're going to make everybody else do, and then we're not taking a little bit of our own medicine.
And then, and then the domino from that is, at our budget hearings at the end of the year, making all our departments understand that in these hard times for our residents, we have to be looking at our own individual budgets for every department and, and seeing what we can do to help our residents through that end.
Sure. And the, the other thing that I think was compelling, as we've gone through these discussions, is there just isn't another measure that gets this amount of relief into the, the hands of the, of the recipients who most need it. And, yeah, if I were, if I were starting from scratch, and some of the creative ideas we heard in public comment today, you know, there are certainly ways I'd, I'd rather, you know, tools that I'd rather have in our toolkit to, to go about this. They haven't presented themselves yet, which, which I think is the other reason why we're looking at this, is that it's a one-year discussion, hopeful that there'll be better proposals to come down in the future.
If the best we're given is the ability to do a temporary tax relief, it's not tax reform.
Right.
That's, that's in the hands of the legislature, and frankly, the whole mess is ought to be, is, is really, it's in the hands of the legislature.
Yeah. Doug, do you have anything else to add?
Quick, quick learner, too, Doug. Most people in this room just abandoned the microphone, so I appreciate you going for that.
Yeah. The only thing I would add is, you know, I'm respective of the inside millage, but that is the only place that we really get revenue growth, inside millage and new construction. The state isn't helping us out. We've been on the guarantee for numerous years. Our state funding is flat. So the only growth that we get is on local levies that we've passed, that our voters have approved. That all gets rolled back. So that inside, that small amount of inside millage, I calculate it's about 17% of our overall tax rate is from inside millage. We, I'm going to say we count on that, but we plan for that every three years to see additional revenue growth there, because that is our only source of revenue growth unless we pass a new levy.
Right.
So the concerning part is, I understand that, you know, that's going to help offset this, but that's just a concern for us. And we're at the end of a five-year levy cycle. Our community approved a levy in 2021. We project that was going to last five years in 2028. As Dr. Hill mentioned, we're projecting a deficit balance, and this would just further compound that. So that, that's our, our concern, and why we're here to share that story with you, because we are, it's, it's kind of like the perfect storm. You know, a lot of things are hitting at one time. But I have said in numerous presentations throughout the community of Wadsworth that I agree that property tax reform needs to happen throughout the state of Ohio. There is a definite over-reliance on it. The fact that the policy changes and things have been done in Columbus over the past 20 years have shifted that tax burden for local education from 47% of the bill being paid by local property taxes to 68% being paid today. Something needs to be done. And I'm certain, based on the legislation that has been proposed at the state level, that something probably will be done. We just need to find a way to make sure that school districts throughout the state are held harmless, because 62% of the school districts in the state of Ohio are at the 20-mill floor. So they're seeing increases with reappraisal. While it's not at the 20-mill floor, we're not seeing that except for on 17% of our millage. So it's just, it's just really tough. And we, we've been proactive. We reduced eight positions this year. We have eight less teachers than we had previously through attrition that we did not replace. So we're, we feel like we're being fiscally responsible to our community as our enrollment declines. But things are, things are tough on public education right now. So I appreciate it. And I appreciate the support the commissioners have done throughout the year with the sales tax and different things, because that's made a big difference in Wadsworth as well.
Thanks. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks for being here. Anything to add?
To this discussion?
Yeah, before we close the book on property tax?
Right, right, to that issue, please.
Yeah, yes, please.
Please, thank you.
And then is there any, was there anyone else here?
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion session in the room. Seeing nobody. Matt, you're good. Conley, do you have anything else?
Um, yeah. Last Tuesday, Metro Parks presented to Hinckley Township on the property that was in discussion. And so the Board of Trustees took no action, so I don't think at this time that is my recommendation that the commissioners need to take any action.
Okay.
Would you agree?
Definitely. Yeah, yep. Steve, anything else?
Nothing.
And I don't have anything, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of public employees.
Second emotion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We need a roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. And we will adjourn from our executive session, so we will see everybody next week. Thanks a lot.